Alright, so I am going to call to order the meeting of the special meeting for the Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals to hear the 40B presentation before Strawberry Fields. First, if you can all these rise. Alright, so I'll get started by introducing the board. I'm Zachary Karen. I am the chairman of the board. Next to me is Nicole Skiles and she's the office manager. Jonathan Gale, who's a member. Greg Logan, who is the vice chair. Jason Quinn, who's a clerk. Michelle Heeb, who's another member. Peter Maren, who's a member. And then Margaret Mitchell, she is our attorney for the 40B project. And before we get started, I do want to set the next meeting date for this. So for those of you in the audience who are new to 40Bs, they don't meet the same meeting that the Dyton zoning board's regular meetings are. We have to plan a day that works for the members who will be voting on the case. Looking at our availability, it looks like the next meeting will be August 7th. Is that what for you guys down there? Okay, and then we're thinking the 31st for a potential site visit?
31st of July.
Do you have any notice for that? Yeah, and that site visit will be a public site visit. What time? Oh, you guys want to do 6?
August 7th doesn't work for Marguerite.
Awesome, okay, what works for you, Marguerite? 14th? Okay, um, we'll go with that. The 31st of July at 6 is a public site visit. And then August 14th will be the next. Okay, and before we begin, gentlemen.
Where, when you say site visit, where are you actually going about?
Nicole, where? They had a Strawberry Fields meeting before I was chairman. I'm not sure if you were there? Okay, so when we hear then?
Does the developer have a suggestion? You're the one who wants to land, or how far you still want to land?
There is, there is. Place for like maybe four cars to five cars. And then across the sea there are spots like the... There's no more than probably seven cars. So maybe, I think there's, I mean, more members would probably don't want to be there.
Perhaps we can find a way to show. Share, transportation.
And before we get started, gentlemen, would you mind signing the extension? Do you mind signing the extension for the time period?
Sorry. Chris Ragistino, counsel for the developer. Which extension are you referring to? I haven't seen any extension requests yet.
There was an attorney application. It was an extension form. Paul Cusson and I and Zach Todd voted.
Extending, what's this extending?
The discussion.
No, we have 180-day time period. If we need an extension beyond that 180, it's time to be glad to discuss it at that time. Marguerite?
Why don't we bring this up at the next public hearing?
Sure, okay, no problem. Alright, so a couple of the housekeeping things. I do want to note about the public that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. And Jonathan, would you like to say something really quick?
Just so that everyone knows, I'm visually impaired and I cannot see the maps. I cannot see the boat. So I have a Bluetooth on, not listen to the ball game this afternoon. But because I keep track of everything on my phone. So if you see me with the piece in my ear and doing things on my phone, that's just so that I know the notes that I have and the things that I want to follow.
Okay, and before we go, I'd also like to make the motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:30? Any discussion? House in favor? Okay, and so now we do need three voting members. I, if I volunteer, to be one of the three voting members of the case.
Mr. Chairman, I'll volunteer.
Mr. Chairman, I'll volunteer.
Any discussion? Okay, and just so the public knows the way this goes, that the applicant will be presenting their proposal. We will then, as a board, be asking questions and then we do turn it over to the public for questions. So we would ask that you please hold any questions for the public input until the board is ready to address them. If for some reason we don't get to you today, that's why we want to inform you that when the next meeting was, you are all welcome to attend the next meeting as well. And if you do choose to speak tonight, there is a clip board on the podium. Just to put your name and address, it's just so when we type up the minutes, we have who you are when you're speaking. Okay, and without further ado, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Chris Ragistino, counsel for the applicant Strawberry Fields Estates LLC. I'm going to give you just a brief overview of Chapter 40B, but before I do that, just to introduce the development team. I'm here with the proponent, Mr. Fisher Hasham of Stonebridge Homes. He's the principal behind the development. Mr. Paul Cusson of Delphic Associates, which is a Chapter 40B consultant and lottery agent with significant experience in 40B, including 40B projects in the town of Dyton. He'll tell you a little bit more about Stonebridge's developments in Dyton. I think this board may be familiar with some of those as well. We're also here with Greg Driscoll, who is the professional engineer and the lead designer on the project, who will be describing some of the elements of the plan this evening. So again, just, I know some of the board members are familiar with Chapter 40B and how the process works. We have some new board members that may not be as familiar with the process. We also have, I'm sure, members of the audience that may know about Chapter 40B. Given the history of this property, this particular property actually had a Chapter 40B project approved on it at one point in the past. But I think it's always helpful to repeat how the process works, what we're trying to accomplish, what this hearing before the board looks like, and why this proposal looks different than other traditional subdivisions that you might see on other developments throughout the state. And that is because it is a comprehensive permit application under Chapter 40B. And what that means is that a qualified developer, which is a developer that has agreed to limit its dividend to a project, from a project, to 20% of total development costs, and that has received approval from Mass Housing, and that offers to dedicate 25% of the units in the development to affordability, which I'll discuss in a second. If you qualify along those lines, then you're allowed to bypass local zoning controls, so local bylaws. You're not allowed to ever bypass state regulations and state standards and good engineering practice. But what 40B is all about is receiving waivers from local bylaws that would otherwise prevent you from proceeding with a development like this. So some of the critical ones are the local conservation commission bylaw regarding local wetlands. You don't have to comply with that if you're a 40B developer. You comply with the State Wetlands Protection Act. Another basic requirement is just dimensional requirements. So if ordinarily you have a one-acre zoning requirement, you don't have to comply with that as long as you meet state requirements and general standards applicable to safety and good design. If you restrict 25% of the units to what is 80% of the area median income, then you satisfy the requirements of Mass Housing and the regulations in order to go forward with a Chapter 40B permit. And why that's important is there's often a misconception about what it is. It's really workforce housing. It's not necessarily low-income housing. It's not a low-income housing development. You can enter a 40B project and you never know if it's a 40B project. All it does is generally allow more dense development than you would otherwise see in a regular subdivision. So what is this board's job? This board's job is to consider the waivers that we're requesting. And if this board, with the advice of counsel and with the advice of its peer review engineer, identifies specific local concerns that are unique to the town of Dyton and specific concerns that are unique to this development site, then it may find a local concern that's sufficient to deny a waiver that we've requested. But the trick is that the local concern has to be such that it would be a condition that would imperil health and safety, which is the standard that's used in the regulations, raise an issue of critical design defect, a critical defect in design, or otherwise be compromising for the need, a critical need for open space in the town. So if the town has a critical need for open space and the development would otherwise take up a lot of open space, then that would be another grounds for the board to weigh whether or not they were not going to grant a waiver for us to go forward with the development or a particular aspect of the development. But that's a very high standard. So things like just the density of the project is too dense. That's not the type of standard that would allow the board to deny a request for a waiver. What we're looking for is specific local concerns that the board or interested parties can articulate that would put the burden on the developer to show why that local concern does not outweigh the need for affordable housing. So that's the exercise. Beyond just this concept of, oh, it's too dense, or, oh, there are too many houses, we're really looking for specifics. And I know Marguerite has a lot of experience in Chapter 40B and she's going to be able to advise the board on how to identify what is a local concern, what is about a local concern, and what is not about a local concern that would outweigh the need for affordable housing. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Cusson, who is going to share some of his experience with Chapter 40B. But he's also going to identify some of the other developments that this development team has completed in Dyton. And I'm sure Paul will invite the board, but we'd invite the board and members of the audience to go and visit some of the other sites that Stonebridge has completed in Dyton to get a feel for what this project looks like or what a Chapter 40B project looks like. You can never get a good sense of it by looking at, you know, a piece of paper out there. You can go online, maybe check out some other information about developments in other towns. But if you're really interested, take a ride through one of the other development sites. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul. And after Paul discusses some of the other projects, we'll turn it over to Greg Driscoll and he'll give an overview of this proposal.
Thanks, Chris. Paul Cusson, Delphic Associates. One of the things that I'd like to add about the 40B process is that a lot of folks might be wondering why we're before the Zoning Board of Appeals and not the Planning Board. And the process is somewhat similar. In a planning board, you would present a preliminary set of plans. The board would review those plans, make comments, give an approval subject to the final plans, what they refer to as the definitive set of plans. The process here is similar in that the plans that are included in your package and the full-size sets of plans that we've also delivered have, are substantially complete in that the regulations require that the plans be preliminary, so into the planning board process. We exceed that requirement. There's still some additional engineering that has to be done. Still going to be providing some drainage calculations and those kinds of things, which are beyond preliminary. We're still going to be supplying those. So any town that does not have 10% of its housing stock designated as low and moderate income housing, an applicant can apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So that's why I'm going to turn the public as to why we're before the Zoning Board of Appeals and not the Planning Board. The development team, especially Fisher, we really don't need much of introduction. Fisher has, and his team, have developed two properties in Dyton recently. One, they're both on Pine Street. And one of them is The Pines, which is a 33 single-family development, which is fully completed. And in fact, cost certification has already been completed. Chris referred to earlier about that a developer can't make any more than 20% profit on the total cost in a development. What happens is that at the end of development, an auditor has the ability, Fisher's office, review all of the costs. That report is submitted to Mass Housing with a copy to the town. And then Mass Housing does thorough research of the registry deeds, the prices, and that sort of thing. And then they finally issue their approval, their draft, first of a cost certification, which also goes to the town. And then the final. So that's already in that process on that particular development. The other development, which I box it, is Stony Ridge. Stony Ridge is 60 single-family homes, of which, in that particular case, there were actually 16, 16 affordables. All of the affordables have been built and sold. There's about six, six or seven more houses market rate to be sold. Some of those are actually under construction. But in addition to those developments, the Stonebridge Group have developed over 19 subdivisions, 19 developments. Combination of, many of them are single-family subdivision, some of them are condominium developments throughout the state, but mostly in the greater South Shore area and in the South Coast area. Some of them are large, there's 300 and some are units, The Gables, which is a condominium development, which actually is a market rate development. So we welcome this board. Clearly, I hope some of you have been through The Pines and been through Stony Ridge to see the quality of construction. And I think we have enjoyed and worked very hard at a good relationship with all the town boards, the building inspector, and the neighbors. Whenever there's been an issue, it's been raised and addressed. So Stonebridge is top-notch as far as being able to follow the developments. Now, in fact, the one that's done with cost certification, we were advised by a couple officials in the town, was the first successful 40B that the town has. And Stony Ridge is right behind it. It's also successful. And there are, you know, developments in Eastern, Dyton, we, I just mentioned. Nadyo Estates and Foxboro. The other area, Norfolk, we've got three developments in Norfolk, one of them called Boyd's Crossing. It's actually on Mass Housing's annual report. It's so successful and they thought so much of it, they've included that in their pictures of it, in their annual report and mentioned that particular development. So if the board wants to take a tour of some of the, we'll be glad to arrange that, a bus tour, whatever the pleasure of the board is. And of those 19 units, there's 1,650 housing units. So it's pretty substantial. There again, I talked a little bit about the preliminary plans. And there again, I think these plans are potentially beyond preliminary stage. The development, consistent, and Greg will get into that a little bit, three parcels. The parcel that sits on Somerset Avenue has approximately 20.5 acres. And behind that, and I guess with the south of that, is, I'm sorry, Somerset Avenue frontage is 38.7 acres. And the other parcel is 20.5. That's the area that we're developing. There's an additional acres on the southwest of the parcel of the site, which contains about 66 acres. And that particular area is being left undeveloped. We're proposing that it be undeveloped for nature trails and that sort of thing. We're proposing 94 single-family homes. All on town sewer, town water. The intent would be that there would be a homeless association that would be responsible for the common area. It is the intent that the roadway system, infrastructure system would be turned over to the town for town roads, town accepted roads. As Stony Ridge was and The Pines, as the development is being, as the infrastructure is being built, there are inspections on by the town selected engineer to review to be sure that it's built according to the standards that were approved, that were submitted and approved by the board. The, in the previous development on the apartments, there were some issues about wetland, what was done, what wasn't done. This particular parcel, as it sits now, has been delineated, the wetland line, has been delineated by environmental consulting and restoration. And Greg's office, Jacob Driscoll, engineering. Ed Jacobs has gone out and done the survey, located all the flies, and those are all shown on the plan. And those are all, we're respecting all of the, all of the wetlands. There was an ANRAD approved, which is, if I have this right, which is the area of wetland. And there was an ORAD also approved, which is the resource areas, wetland resource areas that also have been identified and approved. So we have all of those approvals from the Conservation Commission. And evidence of that was submitted in our application to the board. The affordable homes, let's talk about that a little bit. This is, you know, a lot of people, when they hear the term affordable homes, affordable housing, they get confused and mixed up as to what is it, what's all about? Who's going to be living there? Who's going to be buying houses? How are they going to be maintained and so forth? It's like any other subdivision. A house that they're individually owned and they're maintained by individuals. This is not a Section 8 housing program. Section 8 is a good viable program that mostly addresses very low-income families and mostly in the way of apartments. Some single-family as well. But this is not Section 8 housing. It is, as Chris indicated earlier, it's workforce housing. And let me give you what the income limits would be for people who would be purchasing there. Now, these income limits change every year and we'll be doing the housing lottery at the appropriate time. So those numbers will change a little bit. But these are the most recent numbers that were just published, I believe in March and April of this year. So a family of four, if they have an income of $75,500 a year, they would qualify to purchase. A family of three is $67,500. And a family of five would be $81,550. So this is what I would refer to as, you know, workforce housing that, you know, town employees, workers, that general cross-section of any subdivision. You have, you know, you have homeless, you have attrition, you have, you know, the police, you have municipal workers, and that sort of thing. It's a pretty typical cross-section of folks that would be purchasing there. The sales prices for the three-bedrooms, as we sit here today, would be approximately $240,000. For a three-bedroom and for a four-bedroom, it'd be $260,000. That's about half price of what the market rate, you know, it would be selling for, and they are selling for. The, what I'd like to do is, we were asked to provide additional architectural plans because the ones that were submitted in the book were eight and a half by eleven and kind of difficult to read. So what we have is, I have, and the board required threes, full-size, so for the record, I'd like to... Those are the board. In addition... So those are full-size. In addition, we have a lot by 17, which for tonight's meeting might be a little busy to handle. The, Jonathan, you'll have to memorize those too. The house styles, there again, I just hoped that you would visit those two developments on Pine Street. The house styles are very similar to what has been built, especially at Stony Ridge. And the, we have two sets of plans. The plans are identical. We have a set of plans marked affordable and we have a set of plans marked market rate. And the only difference... The only, the only difference between the market rate and the affordable, and before you even answer that question, is that I'll bet everybody, watch. You go out to the landing halls, do the developments, you cannot tell which one of the affordable homes. And I'd like somebody to take me up on that. Including you, Jonathan. For the record, just so that everybody knows, Jonathan owns a home, one of the affordables, in, at Stony Ridge. And he and I worked very, very hard to get in that home. There were a lot of issues. He's raising his grandchildren and that's up to him. So the only difference is the bathrooms. They're all from the outside. There again, you can't tell the difference. Basically, the market rates, for the most part, have two and a half bathrooms, except for, I think it's the Beacon model that actually has two. And all of the affordables will have one and a half bathrooms. The regulations are very, very clear, and I have an excerpt from those regulations, if you'd like to see it. It talks about the design. When we submitted our site approval to Mass Housing, we submitted the plans exactly the way you have them in that the difference between the market rate and the affordable. And I know we had an issue previously at Stony Ridge, Peter will remember. The other thing is that, so the public knows, is that Greg Driscoll and his partner Ed Jacobs have done an excellent job. They are professional engineers, registered in the state of Massachusetts. And their livelihood is on the hook with their license when they provide these plans and showing, being sure that everything works. But however, the general public usually is skeptical about that, and sometimes the board. So the board says, we would like our own engineer to review the applicant's plans. So we've given the town $20,000, which is held in an account exactly for that purpose. So, and my understanding is the Pine Associates has been engaged to do the peer review. Are you doing traffic too, Peter?
No, and just so you know, the company's name is GCA.
GCA, okay, okay. Sorry, so you're not doing the traffic?
No.
Okay, so, and Peter has the plans and we've given our engineer, and you're a Peter, the authority, if you want to talk directly to engineer, to engineer about questions at the board, to answer any questions the board, they have. Engineers can work all of that out. Traffic, traffic engineer Bill Scully of Green International.
Could you actually provide me with one full-size set of plans?
Sure, well, Greg can do that. We can do, you prefer by PDF or?
If you could just send me a print set, what's that?
Greg can do that. The traffic study was done by Bill Scully, Green International, and that had... The traffic study was done by Bill Scully, Green International, and that had been submitted to the board. We only submitted, I believe, five copies of the traffic study. Just so the board probably knows that, but we've supplied thirty-four copies of booklet, plans, et cetera. And we delivered those to every single board in town. It's a Form M that you have, that we submitted to the board and signed by everybody, except there was an issue with the water department. The water department refused to accept our application, and they refused to acknowledge that they weren't accepting it. But since then, I had the opportunity to speak to, I forget his last name, Jeff, the water superintendent. And I think that they were a little confused as to what the board was looking for, what we were looking for. We're not looking for the board right now, I don't think, I don't speak for the board, but I don't think the ZPA is looking for detailed comments right now on the water, and the engineering of the water, and the pipe sizing and all of that stuff. I told Jeff, I said, I think what we would like is for the water department just to give general comments as to issues they may have. And we have spoken, Bishop has spoken in the past with the water department, and we have a good relationship with them, and the two developments that we've done, and working about, you know, different things that have to be adjusted, certain types of material for the piping and that sort of thing. So we have a good relationship. So now, he said he would, and I think, Zach, you're sending, or have already sent requests to all those different boards for comments, but I told him that probably would be comments, so I expect that he would be submitting some general comments. I also told him, as we get down the process, you know, we don't need approval from them. This board can give approval on all, every single department in town. A local board, the water department is considered a local board. They may not consider themselves a local board, but they are a local board regardless of, regardless of, even if there was a separate act of the legislature that created that board, it's still a local board. And I can give reference to the regulations, and the Housing Appeal Committee rules, and hearings, and decisions that talk about the local board. So at this point in time, I thought maybe we could stop and answer any questions the board may have, or then I could have Greg maybe talk about how it works from a drainage point of view, where the water's going, and just in general about the board. I'm not sure how you want to proceed, Mr. Jones.
I guess I'll start by, there's one question that I had. So, on one of the plans you submitted, there were nine architecture designs, but we have six.
Yes, let me, let me explain. On sheet five of the drawings, the engineers in the left-hand call, in the left-hand corner of that drawing, had a bunch of different types of houses, and I would say, I think there were nine houses. It's not intended that we would be doing all of those nine houses, and there's no commitment that's, and the intent on that sheet was to show that all of the styles that we're proposing fit on all the individual lots. So we might have model A, B, and C on all different lots, et cetera. Doesn't mean that's where it's going to be built. The market determines what's going to be built. So if everybody wants an A, and a C, and some other plan, that's what we'll build. Now, we have to be careful in that the representation of, the affordables have to be represented with all of the different market, with all of the different market rate styles. And there again, I invite you out to those developments and tell me which ones do and which ones don't. So Bishop's done a very, very good job, and if I catch on my case, a lot of times, hey, we need to put this one on that lot, you got to sell that one to this guy, and not that guy, but to be sure that we have that model and that lot, because I built three of those, and I need an affordable for models such and such. So we've been very, very careful about it. So the intent is not, is just to show that the houses all fit on individual lots. So the plans that we've submitted are the plans that we would like to get approved.
So house six.
Yeah, but however, there's always some little variations, a bump out here, or that sort of thing, that a market rate buyer may want, and even some of the affordable buyers, we have sometimes some options. So those are the basic models that we would like to, that we would like to build here.
Do any of the members have any questions they want to ask now, before we proceed? Anything pressing?
Are you going to phase this in?
Yes.
And how many phases?
I think Greg's going to have to talk about the phasing. We have to determine, in order to build a phase, you know, have to be able to flush your toilets and turn the water on and things like that. So I'm not sure exactly what it would be phased, but just like the other developments, we phase those as well.
Right.
So Greg can talk about a little bit of phasing. We'll submit a more detailed phasing plan as to how that's going to work, but the answer is yes.
Go ahead.
Because there are ninety-four, we're not going to build them all, we're not going to put all the infrastructure at once.
Right. But what you did do that with the Pines, you put all the roads in at one time?
No, what, that is partially, we grew up a lot...
The Pines...
All the Pines, I'm sorry.
The Pines, we purchased with the roads in. The previous developer put their own in, and defaulted on the bank, the bank took it over, and then put it up for auction, and we bought it. Right, okay. What's your adversion to, we've done it in the past, where we had a cross-representation for the style of housing, as opposed to just what the market's going to call for? One of the things that we didn't want to happen is be cookie cutter. Where you drive in and you see sixty, all same size.
But that's not going to happen, because...
It's not going to happen, but in the past, we have determined that it wasn't going to happen.
And we can do the same thing, we can, we can work that out. It would be contrary to, there again, economically, what drives these developments are the market rate houses. So we've got to make it look very, very attractive, and I think Bishop's done that. So we don't want all blue houses, for example. And we can work with the board as to how that would work.
The adversion we have against it is, it's difficult to tell customers what is the, you know, like, if we follow a certain sequence of building houses, that customer will want this lot, this whole style, this lot, so long as it is not two or three houses that are replicated within that area. Obviously, I've worked with you in the past, and...
I'm not sure what the, how the decision was made, if you know, if we got...
I'd have to look. I'm not sure. I know it was a conversation we had great much about, and, just like the bathrooms.
Yep.
But you came to us, and you did a fantastic job with the last two, and it looked gorgeous as to look beautiful. And we want to make sure that this, if this happens, it's going to be done the same way, and I'm sure it will be, in terms of why you would not put your efforts into it. But I was just surprised that, with, I think Stony Ridge, you built houses that were not sold yet, and you made them a cross-representation of what, we were going to have so many colonials, so many, well, you have Beacon and the Charles, because we had a cross-representation of all of them, and I'm not so, I'm just wondering why all of a sudden it's not going to be there. It's kind of... The majority of the houses in Stony Ridge were pre-sold, I mean, we don't build them until they're sold, they're sold. However, during some slow periods, we don't just stop. We see, we continue building, you know, we have a sense for what the market would like. We build what the market would like, and we have turned down a sale, if there are two houses running each other then, because we don't want that. Right. But we would like the flexibility to, if we represent our plan, and we have, you know, houses one, two, three, four, five, going in that sequence, and we mix up the sequence, so that, to reflect what the prospective buyer would...
So let me ask, and this is, we're not even into the beats on anything yet, we're just touching the basic surface, but you made the comment just now, Bishop, that, you know, for example, you don't want two homes in the same, next to each other, the same style. And I could be wrong, and again, I can't say it, it's on a writing on books, read to me by different folks, but I think on the plan here, on page thirteen, and everybody in the board can look at it, I think we've got several homes next to each other that are exactly the same.
Yeah, there again, Jonathan, on the plan, the idea was just to show the different models that could fit, not that that model would be built.
So those don't have to be on those lots.
Correct, correct. So the whole idea was just to show that those models could fit on all of the individual lots, and if we have two together, I'm sure we can come to some kind of reasonable agreement solution as to how that would be now.
Oh, absolutely. We'll find, we'll find a way.
Conceptually, we're all on the same page.
Are there any more questions?
One quick, probably minor housekeeping, is I saw the traffic study and the mass housing decision referenced ninety-two lots, you're proposing ninety-four.
Correct.
I don't know if that makes a difference, if you have to go back out and get studies redone, or a decision for mass housing redone, but I just want to bring that to your attention as well.
We do have approval, I can, Mass Housing, we, it's a minor, it's a very minor change, and so we approached Mass Housing. Hopefully, I have a view. So what, so we approached Mass Housing, and saying, because usually what happens, there are always changes from what a developer proposes, sometimes in a layout, sometimes on a road, sometimes in the county, between what was submitted and what was ultimately approved. So once this board is done and approves the development, we then have to go to Mass Housing and get what's called final approval. That's when they take a look at, and they'll say, well, what's the difference between what originally told Mass Housing was going to be built and what was ultimately approved by the board? So we have to get that final approval. So I contacted Mass Housing about that, and I asked them for a letter, sort of explaining that, and the letter was dated June eleventh, and I'll introduce that to the... So that's not all that, typically, the regulations say, any change of ten percent is considered to be minor, and not, but this was nowhere near that percentage. We went from ninety-two to ninety-four, and that had to do in part with, when Greg was doing some of his final designs, there were some changes in the road that led for a different kind of configuration, so that's why there were two additional looks beyond them. So hopefully that satisfies that question.
Anything else?
Yes. You have developed fifty-nine acres with ninety-four units. The Pines, how many acres was developed, so minus the open space?
The Pines was, I think I have that, Bishop? Twenty acres.
Not both Stony Ridge?
I don't know the total, I haven't checked.
I think so.
I think it's forty-two.
Forty-two?
I think so.
Now counting the open space, right?
That counts.
So I was going to say this for later, while we're on the topic of the acreage, the assessors' office wanted to ask, the roadways, were they counted in the acreage?
It's a very unusual request from the assessors' office, and I think we answered that in a letter, but acreage is acreage, so we don't, when we, in the building envelopes and things, we separated all of that, but to answer the question, we did that the roadway is always included in the total acreage.
Okay, they would, they just asked because they said that when it's held, it's taxed, that's why they would...
Well, then the acreage is different. When you're done with the development, the assessors' office only does not assess the roads, I don't think. Yeah, so it's, so it's not a big deal, so. There may be some open areas in those open spaces.
Anything else?
I know I have more, but...
Oh, yeah.
We'll keep waiting a week later.
All right, so you guys want to continue, okay?
I did want to elaborate on one comment that Paul made about this board acting in place of all other local boards. The one area where there's a slight variation from that is the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission over the State Wetlands Protection Act. So this board has jurisdiction over the local wetlands by law, and we're asking this board to evaluate and grant waivers from the local wetlands by law, but we still do have to go back before the Conservation Commission with a notice of intent for an order of conditions under the State Wetlands Protection Act in order to finally permit this development. So they still do have jurisdiction on the state act. That's also important because the State Wetlands Protection Act covers stormwater management. So ultimately, if there's any question as to whether or not the stormwater management system for this project works, whether or not we've balanced pre- and post-development runoff rates, ultimately could be adjudicated by the Conservation Commission in their peer review and the DEP, because compliance with the stormwater management regulations is a requirement under the Wetlands Protection Act. So that's one minor deviation as far as local boards having jurisdiction. But otherwise, this board is wearing everyone else's hat, you can solicit comments from other boards, you can take their comments into account, and then make whatever decision this board ultimately determines based on those comments. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg Driscoll, who's going to just give a brief overview of the layout of the project, and then we can have more questions from the board, and perhaps turn it over to Paul Condon. So Greg?
Did you hear Greg Driscoll, Jacob Driscoll Engineering? Civil engineers nice guys for the project. So, thank you, Paul, and Chris kind of touched on the high points of the developments as far as its negative lots, new post-Stony Ridge roads, new infrastructure, all that type of stuff. Most in general, the site slopes from, this is a high point up in here, generally slopes in this direction, this is where all the wetlands are, around here, this one is here, and all from here. So in general, everything slopes this way, this is why you see the detention basins located down here in these areas. So that's how the location of the detention basis was determined. Right now, the stormwater is designed fully married, and the way we did that was, this is a script of a, a copy of the permit package, we take the impervious area and hundred years storm, seventy percent of that volume will be used to roughsize the basins, and then as we get further into the process, especially when it's a conservation project, we'll do the full design on the basins. Hopefully, they get smaller, but sometimes it may need a little bit more space, but that's the overall approach, to make sure we have space reserved for stormwater. As previously mentioned, there's sewer in the street, so we'll have a wastewater collection system. Like, down this end of the project, where it's kind of lower, there is a pump station to pump somewhere around here, and they will go gravity, everything with gravity from that, the municipal system, which will be connected to the tunnel.
I missed what you said, you have one pumping station?
There's one or two, we have one from earlier, so, we have one at this cul-de-sac here, and I believe what we're showing is a easement through here to get the wastewater all to one spot. Of course, there may be a change in the Pines development. We have one pump station, we're indicating right around here, and then right over here, there's a utility corridor easement that will have water. And then right over here, there's utility cord easement that will have water. So drainage coming from, to connect drainage from this road down this way and sewer, I'll be, so just end loop in the waters.
So only one, only one pumping station has enough?
Has enough. As means determined, we may just have to check that lower, I believe we created this so this is high and goes down into this basin here. Yep, that's a lot, so.
And the stormwater is running off the south?
Stands on projects. So as previously mentioned, the magnitude of lots, the two lots that we developed, total fifty-nine point two acres. Middle frontage is fifty feet. Those are probably the lots that go back around other lots actually. We previously had an iteration where we had some lots in this area and a detention basin up here. That didn't quite make sense, so we reworked it. And let's see, the minimum lot area we're filling is seventy, about seventy-five hundred square feet. Total roadway length is just over a mile, five thousand kilometers square feet, plus or minus. Overall technicality, if there's any more questions.
What was the minimum, was the smallest lot frontage, did you say?
We're showing fifty feet on this track right here.
It's small.
It is. I can double check that because we did have kind of a relief lot.
Yep.
That was where that, that spacing is right here, that we took away and we recreated, so I'll double check on that. I'm sure we still have that as a middle. And setbacks that we're using, this is all issue five, setbacks that we're keeping is twenty feet to the front, ten feet to the side, and twenty to the rear. That's kind of the design standard we've been using to, you know, to show the houses and showing us places holders, cars.
Will you be able to ten foot setbacks?
Is that twenty feet from the center of the road or from the?
From the front, from the front. I'm going to try and model.
Your bylaw still provides for the front setback to be calculated from the center of the road. So have you calculated that from the center of the road, the front, the front setback?
No, I've calculated it from the front block there.
Okay. Would you be able to calculate it for the board from the center of the road?
We can absolutely provide that.
What's the road, what's that about? What's that?
It's southern of the road.
We've got forty of the roads.
Just want to make sure.
Well, let me in there.
Any more questions?
Could I get a copy of that table?
Yes, please.
Actually, I feel a little bit.
All right, before I open up the public input, I do want to read two letters. One was submitted to us from the sewer commissioners, sent June, June twenty-fifth of this year. The town of Dyden Board of Sewer Commissioners would like to make the zoning board appeals aware of some of the issues they have regarding sewer. As part of the developer's narrative, it is stated that, quote, "A new wastewater collection system will be designed for the proposed development to tie into the existing sewer," end quote. There may be significant problems allowing Strawberry Fields to discharge into the Route one thirty-eight pumping station. Sewer is available, but the impact is unknown. We recommend the developer perform a sewer system evaluation and flow study, both upstream and downstream. There are two large commercial users that discharge into that station as well as residential, municipal, and other commercial users. The pumping station is in need of some considerable work and upgrades. It was the intention of the sewer department to do this in the next few years. Due to current events, we are financially unable to complete these tasks quickly, as we hope. If the developer has any questions or requires more information, the next zoning provisions meeting is scheduled for July twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Please contact the sewer department to be placed on the agenda. And it's signed by Colonel Regard, the chairman, and Paul Jaws, the clerk, and Tom Ferry, and the board of certain issues.
Is there anything you wish to, or you can address at all right now?
If you would, if you don't mind giving us that letter, we'd like to know.
Of course, yeah, absolutely.
The next is an email from Mallory, who is our town administrator. This is also dated June twenty-fifth. Good evening, I have reviewed the comprehensive permit application for Strawberry, for the Strawberry Fields proposed development. My concerns over wetlands protection still remain. I do not believe there is enough mitigation that is set forth in this plan and these documents to adequately, adequately protect the various internal pools and protected areas in the proposed site. I am disappointed that the plan still includes all single-family homes and there is no mention of a varying housing stock. I don't believe a, quote, "good faith effort" was made, was made as encouraged by mass housing in their, in their eligibility letter. The stormwater management tab is woefully lacking in proper information as how to, as how to, as to how stormwater management will take place with all these new homes. This is especially concerning due to the developer's intent of the town except the roadway under completion of, under completion of the development. I found no narrative concerning sewer systems and how they would connect to the development or even anticipated use of the sewer, sewer services so that the town can adequately prepare to take on another densely populated development. The same can be said for water use and supply. I appreciate your kind, your kind attention, consideration. I wish I was able to attend the public hearing, however, we have this selectings meeting. I will call you to discuss this for...
And that's when she wanted me to read that into her as well. It has something to do with, I could copy that as well.
Yeah, I would just comment generally, and Paul mentioned earlier, that the process is all about receiving feedback. And these plans are preliminary. And to the extent, to the extent, Paul, I know Paul's always a proponent of the preliminary plan standard under chapter forty-B. And I'll give him that these plans are very, very much developed plans. But where a developer receives feedback from a town as to things that are of concern to the town and where the developer is able to accommodate those requests, generally, that's the first thing that happens. Where they're able to accommodate reasonable requests. So we're hearing this for the first time tonight, which, and we appreciate your comments. And we're writing everything down as we go. But it's the type of thing that we will take and put on. And as the hearing evolves and the plan evolves with it, we'll see whether or not that's something we can address.
Nicole, if you could, if you can.
And just before I go to the residents, are there any representatives of any town boards or town departments that wish to be heard tonight? I do remember the town board.
I'm a member of the open space committee.
Okay. If you need something to sign with the record, please. And I'll also state your name.
My name is David Rosa, and if I speak about open space, I'm not, I also would like to speak as a resident. Come here. So from the open space point of view, the town is in real need of open space. And we've been working very hard on that for several years now. I don't believe that this development in any way answers that call. I, I really appreciate Mallory's letter. And I hope that she does not engage in any negotiations outside of public view. With, now, in your initial presentations, the developers' associates start with the history. And I would like to start with the history because I have a very dim view of government's involvement in any housing whatsoever. And so I'll begin with my history and I'll quickly go to more detailed complaints from my perspective. Mao Sainteong had his plan for public housing failed miserably, caused millions of Chinese lives. Adolf Hitler and Stalin, Stalin representing the dark corners of Soviet Russia, had his plan for public housing. And he caused the Soviets millions of lives. And his public housing failed throughout the history of his reign and the reign of the Congress in Russia. And is still failing to this day. Hitler had his plan for public housing, and that failed. And his plans cost the world millions of lives as well. So now I'll switch to America. Lyndon Baines Johnson, in his new, is, in his plan for America, had included public housing. And that was a dismal failure. It cost us millions and millions of resources and lives. So I take a dim view based on history of it, of government's involvement in housing. While in this example, the government, and by the way, they're all marked by having their laws on their side and their attorneys. Hitler had his attorneys, Mao had his attorneys, and I'm sure Lyndon Baines Johnson had his attorneys. And they had their associates who were going to carry out these plans. And yet it all came to a horrible end. And that legacy continues today. So this is why I take a dim view with the government involved with any, any housing whatsoever. In this example, I just want to add one other thing. While I was outside waiting to come into the meeting, one of the associates of the developer threatened my life. Now, during the course of this meeting, the developers offered this board a bribe. You may not have seen it that way, you may not have heard it that way, but as a member of the public and as an elected official of the town, I saw it that way and I heard it that way. Now, for all we know, continue on down to more detail here. I think the folks who have reservations about the water in the sewer are rock solid. And I, I don't think those questions can be answered, to tell you truthfully, by this gentleman or any of his associates. And for all we know, there's Indian burial sites in that property. And I think we need an historic commission to get involved and give us a reading on that. So I urge the board to approach this slowly and make sure we take in everything that's important to Dyden. We see that some bad planning has resulted in overload of our schools. I can tell you, it's my impression that the sewer system in Somerset is on overload. The sewer system, the sewer treatment plant in Times is on overload. So how they anticipate handling the waste generated from this site is yet to be resolved. So I encourage the zoning board to do their good work and to take the concerns of our town administrator to heart. And good luck resolving it. Thank you.
Could you please speak further on the associate that threatened your life?
I think I'm going to reserve that. I appreciate your interest, but I'm going to reserve that until I have a chance to take it up with legal counsel. Thank you.
Anybody else, whether they're from a town board or a resident?
My name is Samantha Turgeon. I am the owner of the house at seven eighty-four Somerset Ave. I want to start with the internal pool that's behind my property on the southwest side. It is within somebody's lot. There are state regulations on the setback for home pools. I think that they vary, but it shouldn't be on somebody's property. So that's one concern of mine. The other is obviously sewer, the capacity of the sewer infrastructure, and then water as well. I have friends that live down the street and their water is often rusty and overfluorinated, and so is mine. And I, I heard that the superintendent told them that the water system or the infrastructure or whatever is, is operating overcapacity. So I would really appreciate something from the water department, and I would appreciate it if you didn't act as, you know, the water department. And then there's also the issue of the school system. I have two children in the school system. The day in elementary school just installed a lot of classrooms. I've talked to the assistant principal, they have a little plans to do a permit build for at least three years. So I don't know how the schools are going to take in the students and accommodate for them. We have a budget issue right now. All extra kids and sports were just completely, as you know, so that's an issue. Just to be clear for the record, they lost funding, the sports and extra kids curriculum. And then also, I'm wondering, was there a traffic study done?
There was one done.
Okay, and I can get a copy of that from...
Yep.
All right, I will do that. And I'm just wondering too, there's a roadway right on the side of my house. Originally, I guess, I had it lived here, I've only lived here for a year, a little over a year. And I guess that the last development, not there development that came before the board about a year ago, but the one prior to that that was denied, that roadway was supposed to be just for like emergency. So I just want to cover it.
Which roadway, the lower roadway, John, refer to?
First one, I'm going up, this is the one stop.
I think it has something to do with the site, because there's like a, it's a blind spot right before that roadway. So I don't know if there's, I think there's supposed to be like five hundred feet of view or something, I don't know exactly. But I just wanted to bring it up, thank you.
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Clonan, Dyden Monarch District Superintendent. I also live on seventeen eighty El Street. I just received this plan Monday. I recently looked at it. I haven't been able to really give anything to you guys yet. Monday, pretty big packet. I can give you a few things I'd like, obviously the loops. Over by Strawberry and Somerset Ave, that's one tab I want, we want to. And then if we, if we can, I'd like to loop this to Country Hill Estates to the cul-de-sac. To get a loop for Country Hill Estates, because I don't know what the impact on water usage going through this development is going to be.
Sort of wait at the net post?
Right.
Your engineers may be fine. I haven't submitted this to my engineer yet until we get the deposit. For them to review it, we also have a five thousand dollar deposit for our peer review. So I'm waiting on that. As far as the water district goes, right now we have approximately eighteen hundred customers, services, not customers, services. And we have three filters in our plan, which was designed and built in, it was built two thousand and six. Our town is exploding, right in front of our eyes. And it's putting a little bit of a strain on the water infrastructure. We can only pump so much water from East End. We can pump water until your house is content. But in Dyden, we can do around eight, eight hundred gallons a day. It's, it's tight, you know, we, we get it done, no problem right now. I mean, but if we keep building the way we're building, we're going to have to cut the water up at some time, you know, beginning, because it's getting that kind of... On the backs of eighteen hundred customers, I don't know that they're going to look upon us as very, you know, responsible if we need to build another six, seven, ten million dollar water plant, which is coming soon. That's my recommendation.
Mr. Superintendent, can I, can I just ask you there for a minute? The aggregate, my understanding, per individual is roughly about a hundred and ten, hundred, hundred, ten gallons of water per day. And that translates to about thirty thousand gallons a day of additional usage for water. Is that something that the systems can handle at this point?
The, the state uses sixty-five gallons per day per person, which is something we, the state uses... which is something we, the state uses it, that's what we have to, you know, 65 gallons per day per person in a household is pretty much your, your average.
You're still, you're still 25,000 gallons.
Yeah, it's, yeah. I mean, in the summer, on a good day, on a good day where we're pumping hot and people are irrigating, you know, we can pump in excess of 800,000 gallons. Right now, we, we pretty much have the capacity to do, if we go 24 hours a day, around 1 million, 1.1 million. So we're right now up against it. I, I don't see, there's not much of a buffer right now. We had a leak, I mean, a few weeks ago. Around 400,000 gallon leak, and it, it woke me up because our tanks were low. You know, you get a lot when the tanks are low, so, you know. It's just, it's a good system, but it's fragile. It needs to be upgraded. Again, we're small. It's just a small system, and putting this enormous impact on us, it's, it's hard. It's going to cost a lot of money to upgrade things.
I know you just received the plans. You haven't looked that much into it yet. But is there a number of houses that you think it could support? If not, you know, hypothetically speaking, what, what additional?
I mean, 30,000 gallons, 30,000 gallons a day is probably, it's not going to break, just don't get me wrong. I am going to recommend that there's no outside irrigation. And if you're going to want irrigation, you can, you can put wells in, individual wells, or you can put 20 wells in there and just spray it on. But I, I mean, we go from maybe 500,000 gallons a day in the winter to eight or nine in the summer, and it's just not feasible to put more irrigation in town. I think water is for consumption, not necessarily for your grass. I know it's not what you want to hear, I'm sure, but I, it's, it's almost impossible for me to be, I have to be honest, irrigation is pretty much out of the question at this point. So yes, I think we can spot water as far as right now, but as we go forward, keep going and going and going, it's not going to happen. So that's my take. I will submit something more formal.
Please, do you know what the infrastructure is like at 138 that we, that we wouldn't be tying into? And how, how old is it, the condition of it, you know?
I apologize. It's been months, I know.
I know.
But yeah, it's, it's, I think that's probably part of, that's an older part of our system, probably from the 50s. And I believe it's ageish. And we do have, you know, emergency connections. I'm not trying to be dire. We have plenty of emergency connections with Somerset, a ton. I don't like mixing that one with ours, because it's a different, you're adding different chemicals to a lot more. So if we have to buy water from Somerset, yeah, we have water, but now we have fluoride, and we have other things that they put in. So it's, it's not necessarily the best way, you know. So, you know, the infrastructure, I mean, we have to upgrade.
I don't want to get into a Main Street kind of deal. Just to clarify, I'm one of the board commissioners for the, for the water company, so it's a big, this is a big sticking point in me as well, too.
Right. We have so many upgrades to do right now. I, we think that, that are in the town's basket, but it's going to cost a lot of money and time, so. As far as the 30,000 gallons, if there's, you know, if there's no irrigation, and I have loops for Country Hill Estates, I'm happy. As far as I go, I, I would prefer having a loop through Country Hill Estates. That's my point, put that way.
When you, when you look at the viability of this, do you also look at where they're placing their pipes specifically?
We'll have, we, we would have a worker there, you know, watching where they're putting the pipes, how deep they're putting the pipes, hopefully, you know.
I'm more concerned about potentially where they might be doing some placement as in, you know, or as some of the wetland area, potentially maybe go, need to go through some of those areas. That affects erosion.
As far as that goes, there are any chance, they would, they would go out there, I'm pretty certain. They, they would have monitors. That would, that would be an issue with us. So I think you guys, they would come to this. My issue is water consumption at what's, what is full. It's for five, you know, generally, consumption, fire protection. That's what I'm happy with, not throwing it under grass, which is, a lot of people like to, I like to have a green grass, okay. Not my concern. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Need to speak from the mic, or can I just speak?
If you're going to do it, you sign in.
Don't you put in your own irrigation?
The microphone is just someone for us. It's for the odd cable.
Good evening. My name is Dr. William Reed, PhD. I've been a resident here for 21 years on Country Hill Drive with my wife, Janet. She's also in attendance tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I think this meeting is important. I wish it would have better representation. But I think in part, some of that is due to the timing of this. And in that light, I think a project of this nature, so substantive, so significant, and potentially impacting the character of this community, needs more public notice, more attention. We need to have more residents informed. Because if this meeting, if this sub-development, if this housing complex of 94 units is successful, then it will be embraced, and more communities will do the light. But we need to have the residents of this community who have been with us for many years, who are taxpayers, engaged. This is not being engaged, and part of that is summer. It's a week before July 4th. Many people just put away their school lunchboxes, and they're planning vacations. I mean, I would, I would suggest that this meeting, all right, could have been given more thought deliberation as to when it would be held. I received a certified mail maybe two, two and a half weeks ago, and I'm sure that is within the legalities of how it should be. But given the nature of this project, 94 units, and the red flags we've heard this evening about impacts on conservation land that are still highly questionable, we don't know. With all due respect to the professional folks here who are representing and are proponents for it, it seems, and can be minimized, but I'd like to hear a balanced argument. I don't hear any balance here. We know there's been an independent study, which they potentially have funded or are funding for a peer review on the engineering. Gee, we got to hear about that. I want to hear about counsel for this town, and what they say about it. I've gotten a sense here tonight for the last hour that this is almost a fait accompli, that it's a rubber stamp. And I don't think that should be. I think we need more due diligence. We need to do a better, all right, case of homework. Maybe it's fitting that we be in this building. But I honestly think, earlier tonight, we said, okay, we'll have a, we'll have a site visit. And, well, we'll do it in two weeks. No, we'll do it in three weeks. Well, that's not how you do things. You do things, particularly with the potential impact of this project, with enough transparency that your, our residents are informed. And then if they make the deliberate choice, I'm not going to participate, fine. But, but having some site visit, and it wasn't even thought, how are we going to do it? Parking is only appropriate for four. Eight big, well, we'll get a bus or two, we'll show them in. These things require thought, and it requires notice to our residents. And potentially, that notice should, all right, provide them with the potential impacts on the character of this town, on the school system, on the police, on fire. The red flags about sewage, what it can handle, what it cannot handle, wetlands. This is serious. And I would just urge this committee, because what I sense about this committee, that this is the committee. This decision is an important one. It needs to reflect the interests of this town. That will be your legacy. If you rubber stamp this, just because it's 40B and you have very little degrees of freedom, and it does not manifest itself in the form and context as presented here by these gentlemen, that will be your legacy also, if this town's character continues to change. So I would just ask you respectfully, do your due diligence, inform this community, give them an opportunity, and I don't mean in July, when they're taking their children camping and the like, when they're getting time away from fighting traffic on Route 24 or 195. Give them time to kick back, and then give them time to become informed about what is happening here, and then participate. And if you get their participation, and they embrace it, fine, we're good. But an informed constituency is really what is in your interest, because the kickback will be on all of you. Thank you.
Just so that you are aware, Martin Reed, you can attest to this too, is that when we receive the 40B, we have to open the public hearing within 30 days. So that is the reason for this time, why this meeting was chosen for today. We had to do it within 30 days from when, when we received the application. So it wasn't like we just arbitrarily picked, oh, we're going to do it the week before a holiday. If they, if they did it, and it was going to be July 4th, it would have to be July 4th. It's, it's, it's a law. It happens in 30 days of when, when you receive the application.
I also like to comment a couple things, too. This is a comprehensive program. So what this means is, is you're hearing it for the first time as we are. So what's being stated in front of you is not exactly what's going to be done at the end of this project. So we're sitting here gathering information just as well as you guys are. I don't want you to think we're making any decisions about this board and just letting these gentlemen talk. This is what they're representing. Now we take it, we go with what we have, and at that point, we go back and we have another meeting, and hopefully there'll be a bigger county area. As you can see, we brought in a police officer detail, so we thought this was going to be a large, larger meeting. So I don't want you to think this board's just sitting here, just, yep, yep, yep. That's not what we're doing. We're gathering information for the next meeting.
No, I don't, and I don't mean to disparage this, but I'm trying to say that, and I just find the comment right now. So by law, you have to have a public hearing once a 40B application is presented. So it raises a curious question, why, why provide that application at this timing? And at least it does suggest, raises the question that the timing of the application in coinciding with the 30-day follow-up period lends itself to this fast turnover. And so all I'm, all I'm suggesting is, if we can from this point forward, proceed more diligently, more respectfully, so this entire community becomes more aware, more informed, and then thus more engaged, it'll be in everybody's best interest, including the developers.
I think that with regard to part of, part of what you were saying a few minutes ago, it's the intent of all of us here, I believe, to reach out to all of the other committees in town, to get their input, to hear what they have to suggest, to bring that back to the public, and also to, to recommend that, you know, they hold public meetings, or they come here and potentially, you know, hold their public meetings with this board, so that we're all here together to hear the same information. Part of the goal here is to be transparent. This is a long process. It's not going to happen in three or four meetings at all. There's, there's too much involved here, and there's too much at stake. As far as the 40B process goes in general terms, as Mr. Cousins alluded to, I came into the town through the 40B process, which I myself could not have done, except for the fact that I needed to, because we're, we're raising two grandkids. And I'm saying that simply because that doesn't mean that automatically, even me, agrees with the concept of what they're proposing. It may be that we ultimately, as a town, say no, or as a town, or as a board, we come back with a different recommendation for numbers of units, or the type of development that we think should be proposed. That's not an automatic. The only thing in the end result that's part of an automatic down-the-road process, so that everyone is aware, is, as Mr. Cousins said, every town in the Commonwealth ultimately has to strive to meet a 10% goal of affordable housing. And something that, as the town grows, and as the, the population increases, and now it's a little over 8,000, for those of you who don't know that already. You're right, there's a lot of pressure on the schools, the police, the fire departments, the public service, the water, all those kinds of things. But there are a lot of ways that 10% goal can be couched. Right now, we're just over 4%. So we have a long way to go. That might mean looking at potentially what these gentlemen are proposing. It could be looking at other ways for senior housing, or, you know, rental subsidies, or rental housing for seniors in the town, because there are so many seniors. This isn't an automatic done kind of thing. It's a long process. And I think it's, it's really important to hear from everyone. Obviously, I would hope that most of you can tell just by the questions we're beginning to start to ask at the first meeting, there's a lot of concern about the wetland area, there's concern about water, there's concern about traffic. This is only the starting point. And I think everybody should keep that in mind, and yes, we would like to see many more residents coming out to these meetings.
Thank you. I'm going to put Greg on the spot here real quick. You did the pines, correct? You worked on the pines?
Yes.
How many hours did you put in there, if you, off the top of your head?
Over 100, 150.
Volunteer time?
Yeah. It's a long process to do this by the time, and that, that was just, just let that flow away and have a good one, thank you. We did all the hours. Peter, Karen, who made it as well. There is a lot of hours involved, like, just trying to gather all the input, like, I just want everybody here to know. And at this point, then we can go forward and start. We have, I have three pages of questions myself that I wrote out. Every member here has things they want to ask, whether it happens tonight, tomorrow, or the next meeting, that's what we're about to do. So there's no decisions being made today. They're not getting any grant to go forward or anything like that. Obviously, we did think it was going to be more public, we apologize for the date. When they apply for the application, they're under a timeframe as well as we are, so.
You liked it so much, you're going to volunteer again? One more thing that I wanted to bring up, and it's a concern of mine as well, but we can't use it as a concern for a 40B, is the school systems. We know they're overburdened, we have budget issues, but we can't take that into account when we do a 40B. Just want everyone to know that. Wish we could, but we can't. But it is a concern. Is there anybody else?
Just one question. Rick Lawyer from 732 Somerset Ave. On the 40B, they're proposing 92 houses under this 42B, and you just mentioned our school systems. Can you say that the 92 houses are too much for us and not deny the 40B? In other words, they don't build all the houses they have to build on their merchant or their sell, their dollar amounts, and provide with the 40B to provide the 40B aspect of what they're trying to sell this under, and not make as much profit? Do you have to allow them to build 97 or 94 or whatever the magic number is houses to meet the 40B criteria? In other words, say it's 20 houses out of that. Do you have to let them build the 94, or do you let them build their 40, or 20 40B houses only? Are we only doing 40B housing? If it is, what's the 40B housing they want to build, and no more? Just build your 40B. If they're all concerned about 40B housing, build your 40B, affordable housing, you'll be gone. Don't build your for-profit. I don't understand the 40B thing where 92 houses come into play, and now you're saying 40B is what they're coming under. Because you're not. You're providing a small amount of affordable housing. Miniscule.
Are you asking us, or are you asking the developer?
I'm, I'm asking you, is what you're going to consider?
40B is not, all as the affordable houses, 40B is relief from the town for side setbacks, frontage. We have conservation, water department, things like that, that we have our bylaws for. 40B comes in from our state in regards to is that those are the reliefs that they're asking for. So these house lots that we usually ask for 3,500 square feet, 175 feet of frontage, they're coming in with 75 feet of frontage, and they're 7,000 square feet. That's, that's what 40B means if you remember state guideline, we love smaller lots, being able to put more homes on here, and being able to go ahead and lead the project work. In that project, we also have a percentage of how many affordable homes that are involved in this. That's where it becomes the benefit for the town to be able to sell these homes that way. That's with the 40B, and I'll let the council talk to you if you have any questions regarding that a little deeper. But I believe if there's anything else anybody wants to add, that's pretty much what 40B is. It's not affordable housing. It's affordable, it's, the whole project's a 40B project. the whole project's a 40B project, follow the survey guidelines. And they're asking us for relief. They've given us with 60 pages of relief for the town path bylaws. Those, they're not going to go 60. They're going to have to go in front of different boards. What are going to take recommendation boards? They're going to have to answer these things. At that point, comes back that thing that you see there with all those houses is not going to be like that when we're done. I can almost guarantee that because they're asking for a lot of different things and I just don't see it.
Okay, back to the.
But I can't answer for that. I don't know one member of the board.
Okay, the question is the school system with the 40B housing and you don't have a say over it now. So 40B tells the town, your school system is burdened while dealing with it.
We get federal and state funding from the state for this type of work. The town already receives.
Because we should always know that.
That's what I feel.
Thank you.
Sir, do you mind just signing a form please for the record? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to comment a little bit on that?
Yes, please.
So the town, every community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has something called a subsidized housing inventory that is essentially controlled by the state, submit information to the state to show the number of subsidized homes that you have in the community. That subsidized housing inventory, once it reaches 10% under the 40B laws and regulations, provides the town with the ability at that 10% limit to start, no longer be subject to the 40B rules where they can't come in and ask, and essentially in some situations, absent some of the exceptions that Attorney Agostino spoke about today, they can ask for and receive waivers from local bylaws. I haven't looked at it just recently, but I trust Jonathan's comment that it's now at 4%. It possibly could be a little bit higher than that when we get some remaining units built. But the reality is, is that for single-family home subdivisions, when they are constructed, the only units that count towards a subsidized housing inventory are the affordable units. So whenever you're building a 40B development of a single-family homes, you have to realize that both your numerator and your denominator are increasing at the same time. So you are not getting 100% of those 94 units counted on your subsidized housing inventory. The town administrator, and I believe some of the comments made at the point of project eligibility review by Mass Housing had talked about potentially some sort of mixed housing stock. If the developer were to build some apartment units in this subdivision somehow, apartment units under the state regulations, all 100% of those units count towards the subsidized housing inventory, even though the rentals may not necessarily all be at affordable rates. So you could still have 25% of your rentals at an affordable rate with the remaining 75% at a market rate. But then all 100% of those units count. That's something that this town has a limited amount of. Most of the 40B developments in recent years, and by recent years, I say the last 15 years or so, have been single-family subdivisions, single-family home subdivisions. So there is a few very old apartment units that the town has that are counted on the subsidized housing inventory. So when you asked your question, could they just build the affordable units instead of building the market rate units? They're going, anytime they build a unit, they only have to agree unless we get an agreement from them or impose a condition that it be greater than 25%. They only have to have 25% of the number, total number of units that they build be affordable. So if this plan were somehow to be reduced to 40 units, only 10 of those units would need to be affordable. So now we're only having 10 units added to our subsidized housing inventory stock. If we think about mixed use, which is something I think that this town administrator has at least asked the board and the developer to consider, that may be a way for us to think about the subsidized housing inventory down the road increasing by a greater amount than just the number of affordable units. The board members are correct that the impact on the schools is for the most part not really a rationale the town can use as a reason to deny or impose conditions on a 40B development. But that being said, I think that this town certainly has the ability to at least listen to comments from the town, have the developer listen to those comments. I mean, we're not going to ignore those comments. I know that they think about that. I know that there is, that is a conversation topic that's very relevant to this community right now. And I think that there are other pieces such as the water and the sewer and some of the conservation elements that may just by virtue of review, peer review, which has, the peer reviewing engineer is sitting here for, you know, tonight's hearing and has not even received a full set of plans to begin his review. Through any further conversations that we're having as we vet this process and get answers to the board's questions, as we get more input from the various local towns, commissions and boards and officials, as we get that information, I think that this board is going to be able to start having conversations that ultimately very well could be a redesign of the plan. And that's part of the reason why talking to the sewer commission right now on a general, from a general perspective, talking to the water district from a general perspective, it makes more sense than going into getting specifics because there's a good chance this plan may get redesigned a little bit. And then as it gets redesigned, we're going to go back to those boards to say, please give us now, this looks like more of a, of the design that we're probably going to be asked to issue a final approval, a conditional approval or denial on. Can you give us some more specifics with this particular design in mind? And that's something we'll talk to the developer about too. Depending on where this process is, as much as it may not typically be required that the developer go to some of these boards ahead of time, it could be something we condition. It may make sense in this particular project, given some of the site conditions, for us to get a little bit more input from those boards before we vote out this public hearing or before the board takes a vote on that. So I do want to echo that this process is not something that's done in just a few meetings. Typically, this board, when it's reviewed 40B developments, does also undergo some working sessions, which are not necessarily formal public hearings, so you don't have public comment, but the public is invited to attend. It's an opportunity to do a little bit more conversation with the developer to get some of the nitty-gritty details resolved until you get to a point of more of a final site layout. Final by, I mean, by final, I mean a site layout that the town and the zoning board are going to be boning on. So they may schedule some of those pieces as well. We'll certainly take into consideration as the public around the timing of those schedules. There's no reason that this town, if there is an interest, couldn't hold, this board couldn't hold another site meeting at a later time. You know, you want to think about weather conditions as well. So doing that in the middle of winter wouldn't be a good idea either. But I think there's certainly, if that's an interest that the public comes back to this board with and says that there's enough people who want to have site meetings or have another site visit, they absolutely, I know, would be more than willing to do that. So this is just, again, starting the process to have people hear information. And before a lot of the questions are coming, we want to make sure the public has an opportunity to ask its questions so that the board hears all of that and thinks about it in light of all their own questions as well. There will always be a period of public comment and opportunities for questions at every public hearing until that is closed. And then there may be a final few meetings where after the public comment period is closed, and that's really only when the board feels satisfied that it's heard all that it can from the public, that it's not hearing anything new from the public at all. And they close that public comment period, they may have a few more public meetings where they're really having some detailed discussions around possible conditions, if they're going to be issuing a conditional approval or not, or just having some deliberation discussions before they take a final vote. So please know that this process is not going to be resolved in the next few months. It's certainly not going to be resolved before the summer ends. And I mean, I guarantee you that it won't be resolved until we get final comments on the peer review engineer. We're still identifying a peer review traffic consultant to take a look at that traffic study. So we still need to get that person on board, which hopefully we'll have for the next meeting and we'll let the public know who that is. All of those people need to review this information, give that a note to the board.
Thank you very much.
Question from Sowd, 7:42. So it's an avenue. We're about to just to the law with a proposed road is through concerns.
What was your last name again?
Sowd, S-O-W-D-T-N. I already have issues with water pressure and, it's noticeable on many days that the pressure is reduced at all the taps in the house and the flood. And I attribute that to when the water usage is higher, the pressure will off. So I already experienced that now. I expect it to be much worse for 92 more houses growing right next door to me. The other issue was the traffic. I pull out that driveway several times a day, every day. I'm the best traffic study you have. It's horrible right there. That's a terrible place to pull out onto 138. So it's going to get worse. I'm going to have 92 homes a day going out right next to where I do it every day. And I know how bad it is now. I would like to see the traffic study.
This is Dan Higgins, Florida, Wisconsin, Arizona. My question actually is not pertinent specifically, just Robert Field, to the question about the current housing stock, which was put at between 4% and 5%. My understanding is that Lincoln Village is not counted in that inventory. And I was just trying to get a clear answer. Is that a true statement? And if so, why not?
Lincoln Village is counted.
It is counted among that 45%?
Yes.
Okay.
We do, we do, the, we have a separate committee in town, which is oddly enough for all intents and purposes, called the 40B committee. And one of the things that the 40B committee has to do is we have to produce a plan for the state, for the Department of Environmental Community Development. We recently produced another plan. And when we do that, we look at everything, all the units that are through, that meet a whole bunch of different affordable criteria. That includes senior housing, senior affordable, senior rental, public housing, in the case of Lincoln Village and so forth as well. And we tabulate all of that. So there are some places where there's only two or three units in town. There are other places, such as Lincoln Village, which has a large number. The total of units, I believe, that we have right now in town, quote unquote, that meet the affordable criteria, I'll have the plan in front of me. I'm happy to bring many copies next time for people to be able to review. But it is a lot of pages. It's over 100 pages long. And it would require a lot of copies, a lot of, you know what I'm saying. But right now, I think we're at somewhere around 160 units of total housing right now through the 40B process. We put in 160. I want to say the max, if I'm thinking right, is 72 right now. So we are way below the level right now. The more single-family homes that are built in town that are just a regular process, your neighbor sells a lot, they're building two houses. Every time that happens, you can figure for every 10 houses, we're losing, you know, 0.1% of the value of where we need to be. So, you know, that's, having said that, again, that doesn't mean necessarily that this developer is going to have the same number of houses. They could have less houses potentially. They might opt to build some kind of a mixed development for part of this potentially. Or who knows? We may, we're trying to identify other parcels of land in town that either the town owns or the town can purchase that are small parcels so that we can do that other type of development that our council spoke of in terms of, you know, building, you know, four units to a building or small duplexes, things like that through the town process. But again, that's a whole different part of it. And that's something that the 40B committee is looking at as well. And I will also, while we're, I mentioned the 40B committee, tell you that the 40B committee itself separately from this committee works with the developers and with developers H. and Mr. Cousins to look at other criteria around the process. So there are a lot of different things that have to be met and a lot of different obligations that they have to meet as well in order for this process to go through, way beyond even just hearing from all the committees in general terms.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Any kind of questions? Any kind of comments? Again, as you stressed many times, this will not be your last or only chance to speak. So if you feel like you have a lot and you want to think about it, think about it more, I think you're quite welcome to.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dennis Murphy. I'm an attorney with Hill Law. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Malie, a resident of the country of Illinois. I've been in this room as much as you have over the last five years. You're the third board I'm appearing in front of in connection with some iteration of this project. For those of you who may not know the history, I'll be very quick. A year ago, we were here and most of us on this side are exactly the same. It's the board that's changed. Mr. Agostino was here, Mr. Bashir, Cousins wasn't here, Driscoll was here. Many of the residents were here. I was here. Jay Talaman was here as town council. The planning board at that time was considering a conservation subdivision that was 46 units. And one of the things I would urge you to do is consult with your fellow boards, including the planning board, because there was an awful lot of information about this site that was already provided. Granted, it's a different legal structure. It's a different project, but it's the same site. By way of example, in a letter dated March 21st, 2018, your health agent, Todd Pillen, an engineer, wrote a very detailed memorandum about the water table. That's a significant issue that I don't think has been addressed yet. It's an engineer's issue, but suffice it to say that the depth of groundwater on the site is extreme. Don't, 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 I'm not going to characterize it. He says it's a serious issue. He says that it's as shallow as two feet in many instances. It's an issue for basements. It's extremely problematic for the drainage basins. It's problematic for the location of roads. So that's one point that comes directly out of the proceeding we had just a year ago in front of the planning board. And that, by the way, was half the density of the project that's proposed now. Four years ago, I was here in a different capacity, representing a number of the folks on the country of Illinois in front of the Conservation Commission. This board had approved a different project from a different developer at 180 units for this site. That then went to the Conservation Commission where they examined the weapon issues in extraordinary detail, so extraordinary that it ended up going on appeal and to trial. I actually was trial counsel for the commission and the commission won. So that project went away. As a result, there is a 40-page decision from the Department of Environmental Protection about the weapon resources on this site. Again, I was trial counsel for the town's Conservation Commission. And one thing that ought to be in your record is this decision. And I would commend the board to consult with the Conservation Commission and particularly the members who took the position that they did in that, which was ultimately vindicated on appeal. I mention that because we now have a new ORAD. This was an old ORAD that's now been superseded by a more recent one. But if you read it, it's very helpful to understand because you're being asked to make decisions, citing decisions about where infrastructure can be located, where it makes sense to put roads and houses and how many lots. But the background plan that you're working from doesn't actually show all of the weapon resources. Don't take my word for it. Take your Conservation Commission's word. This is a document that's, I'm sure, my copy's not, but I'm sure it's recorded at the registry. And it says, it checks the box, that the delineation was inaccurate. And it says it's inaccurate because it doesn't include other weapon resources, which are...
Just the three, I had to know.
We do have that here. Okay. So you know that there are other weapon resources that are protected, that were protected by the hearing officer in this 40-page decision regarding this exact same site. So one of the things I would commend to this board is before you try to get into citing issues and site development issues, how many units and where you could put roads, you might insist on a more robust weapons plan. The last time around, what happened is they came to this board, they got their comprehensive permit, then they went to the Conservation Commission, and we know how that ended. This time around, there's no reason you can't have a concurrent proceeding, an NOI proceeding in front of the Conservation Commission. That would be something that the board might consider to recommend to the applicant. But there's also, even if you don't have a formal NOI process, you can ask your Conservation Commission for detailed comments so that there's an understanding. And just to pick an example, so there are waters on this site that are tributary to a public water supply. Those are called Class A and some are Class C waters. The judge found in... The judge found in his decision that the plans from three years ago did not depict those. And if they had, there would be a setback from those. The plan you have in front of you now doesn't show those tributaries and doesn't show any setback. So I don't know how you can make a good decision about citing roads and house lots without knowing where all of the wetland resource areas are. One, one final point, and then I'll sit down, it's a preliminary one. Your board happens to have about the most robust local comprehensive permit rules that I've ever seen. I'd love to know who drafted. One thing that I would suggest you ask your peer reviewer to do is a compliance checklist against those rules. I think there are certain things that the rules call for that are not yet in the application. And it would be helpful to know that you have a complete application in front of the board before you receive much further. One final point. There's been mention about the town accepting the road. I think you could make it very clear, it's, it's kind of an inconsistent position to say, we'd like the town to accept the road, yet we want these waivers from all these subdivision rules and regulations. Many, many towns require a vote of town meeting to accept a road, and many town meetings categorically will not even put it on a warrant if it's a substandard road. That is, if it's not built in accordance with the local code, it's not eligible to be accepted by the town. That's an issue that probably could be figured out upfront. And if the applicant does really want the road to be accepted by the town, then the simple answer is, you've got to comply with the local subdivision rules of rights. That's it for now. Thank you very much, Jim.
Question for you, which is, you just, you alluded just in your previous, previous second to last comment, you alluded to the application process. My question is, you mentioned that you wonder whether or not we're following the latest and greatest in regulations, and suggested that we check that. We're going to do that anyway, that's one of the things that I think some of us want to do. But I think if there's concerns that you have with what we're not following, I'd like to ask you if you would submit those to us.
Oh, sure, Mr. Gill, I have capacity to do that. You know, I meant, I meant it as a compliment. I didn't mean to suggest that the board wasn't following proper procedure. What the board has is a local comprehensive permit rules that are very extensive.
They are very extensive, and that's why I'm getting at it. If you think there's something we're missing, it's important for us to know what you think we're missing.
Okay. I'd be happy to follow up and put a letter together with anything that, there are certain things that are not there that probably don't need to be there. So, for instance, this is a sewer project, and so maybe it's not necessary to have a lot of analysis about if it were going to be a Title V system. And that's not something you would require. But I'd be happy to submit a follow-up letter on, on issues that I think the board might follow up on.
I think if you're here officially representing a resident or residents of the town, it's important to have, to hear what you have to say, and if there's specific areas of concern that you've submitted to us.
I will. Thank you.
Just for the record, we do have about a half hour until we have to adjourn. Is there anything else? I'm not questioning, I just, like, people know the update on time, that's all.
Tom Brady from Sebby Way Street. I represent, I wear a few hats in town, Montessori, the ones no more are coming, also on the highlighter. If it's possible, it's probably best everyone's interest when we do that field trip, we could have where the roadways meet 138, flag or stake, to be clear. Because we're all going to reminisce the last project, and those same concerns are going to be very relevant. A question probably more towards my group, or to an other engineer. So when we have a discussion with the sewer, does it come straight to our engineer, your engineer's set, or is it just your engineer needs to be satisfied, or both?
Officially, under the 40B rules and regulations, it would need to only require that the town peer reviewing engineer would give input here. However, I've already had some preliminary conversations around the fact that the sewer commission very likely should be able to give specific input, and that their engineers' peer review would be essential to that.
Right.
So I envision that there may be some agreement to get a sewer engineer's review as well on that point. We're going to see where we're at.
Right.
But officially under 40B, technically, it only needs to have the zoning board's peer reviewing engineers' input on this, before the zoning board can be at a position of being required to vote. I think the zoning board would prefer that it now, that it gets some input from the sewer commission, and I anticipate the sewer commission is going to want its engineering review before it's filed.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? How from the, who are the applicant, do they have anything to add, or any...
First thing, for traffic, traffic peer review in the next, in the next meeting, is what, is it, would you like us to address, whether or not we hope to have a traffic engineer at that meeting to discuss his findings? I think that if we had someone along, or if you had somebody for your review, maybe issues, all of the, which way you want to proceed.
Yeah, that's, if the board is done asking questions, if no one else from the audience has any comments this evening, and if we're ready to conclude, as Paul was indicating, one of the things that I like to accomplish is to really set a game plan for peer review. I know GZA asked for some plans tonight and some information, and we're absolutely going to supply that. But to Paul's question, the next step would be to identify a traffic engineer to do peer review. So I assume proposals have been collected on that. If there's any other information that the board needs us to submit, or Jacobs to submit in order, or, you know, information for the traffic report to submit, in order to accomplish that peer review, then now would be the time to get a sense of it.
Sure. I'll order it, and it was something that you recommended, Nicole, you reached out, but they never got back to us. Do the mission.
Yeah, so I think we're going to continue to pursue some traffic consultants we have not identified on just yet. In terms of the question of Mr. Cousin, my suggestion would be that, you know, the hope is we'll have an identified peer reviewer, peer reviewer for traffic at the next meeting, let you know who that is, possibly in the process of giving information to them. While I do think it would be important to have your traffic consultant at a meeting in soon, I'm not sure that the next meeting makes sense for a couple of reasons. One of which is that it's still an August meeting, and I do take to heart the comment by one of the butters around that. I think traffic is an important piece, particularly to the neighborhood, so I'd rather have a traffic, the traffic engineer present this to you at maybe more of a September meeting. And then there will likely need to be a time for the traffic engineer to come back, because our peer reviewer will want to, to do a full vetting and address any of those concerns. So I anticipate you'll need your traffic engineer for a few times, but I don't mind suggesting to the board that all we will do at the next meeting is just let you know, that would be our goal, to let you know who to do.
I mean, what we've sent into the board at this point is our initial traffic report. And then what, what I would suggest, and I don't know how the timing would work, but if that traffic report could be peer reviewed offline, behind the scenes, then we could schedule, if it's a September hearing, to have both engineers right there and do traffic at that hearing, and just make it efficient, and then they can have a back and forth and engage in dialogue, have that hearing rather than doing two successive hearings.
So the only point I would make on that is that I suspect our traffic engineer, who would be, the board's traffic engineer who will peer review it, will want some information from the public as well. So I envision that they'll probably, in order to finalize their peer review, want to listen to what the public has to say after the presentation. And then there may need to be another meeting to address those comments, too. I think that's important. These are people who lived in this area for a long time, as I understand, who've done the studies, and I'm pretty, you know, fairly familiar with how traffic studies work, but just the, the local conversations about what it's like.
Sure.
It would be important for our peer reviewer to get.
Yeah. You know, generally, that might be something that could be added in a supplemental memo after that hearing where both engineers present, because then, obviously, the, the audience in the board can be informed of what the professionals have concluded based on the information that they have. And then from there, they can get input from the butters and people that are familiar with some of the traffic conditions, and then have a supplemental report. But just doing, you know, rather than having two successive hearings, it'd be great if we could get a, a peer review, some written report back, is what we'd ask for at this point.
Well, let me, let's find out who the town is using first, and can, and consult with them, see what their process and they would prefer it follow would be. And then from there, you know, if they are able to give some preliminary comments. Again, I do expect it to be at least a few meetings with the traffic engineers. I don't think you're going to need a traffic engineer at every meeting. I don't think the town should be meeting a traffic, it's traffic, peer reviewer at every meeting, but I don't think it'll just be done.
Okay.
I'm going to have to ask a question to our council and to developer, because I don't know the answer to this at all, or anything specific. But I'm wondering whether or not there has ever been, I hate to use this term, because everybody uses it, an environmental impact study of that area at all overall, because there are so many wetlands, because there's so many questions about drainage and water flow, because there's so much wildlife and so forth, whether there's ever been an actual separate study done? And if there were to be a study done, whose responsibility would that be to add to something like that?
So as far as, you know, a broad environmental impact report, generally, this project doesn't trip NEPA. I mean, we're not at that level. And as I indicated before, this project requires a permit under the Wetlands Protection Act. So some of the concerns that were raised earlier about wetlands and whether there are other wetland resources on site, and just for the board's information, there are other wetland resources on site, they're just in areas where we're not proposing any development, so they're not relevant. All of the wetlands that are relevant to our development, where the houses are going to go, where the lots are going to go, where we're going to be doing grading, those have been delineated, those relevant ones. So the comment about inaccuracies or hidden wetlands, or, you know, we're not disclosing everything, that's inaccurate. So ultimately, there will be a full hearing before the Conservation Commission under the Wetlands Protection Act. And if the Conservation Commission or the Wetlands Protection Act, there was also, it's going to be required, a natural heritage file, a natural heritage and endangered species permit application, because, again, it's the part of the site that's not being impacted by the development, so, but, but there are 60 acres that aren't being developed. So all of those types of issues at a, at a high level, you know, things that would implicate an environmental impact report are at a very high level, will be addressed during the Wetlands Protection Act proceedings before the Conservation Commission. What this board should be looking for are specific local concerns that are addressed by a local bylaw, a local wetlands bylaw that we're asking for a waiver from. So if there's a wetland resource that would be delineated under the local wetland bylaw, and we're asking for a waiver of that, that would be relevant to these proceedings, rather than a broad, general impact study about the environment at large. If there are specific issues, those are the types of local concerns that would be relevant for these, for these proceedings.
Mark, can you, can you, in general terms, I don't want to get into it.
The, I don't disagree with attorney honest, you know, that's the way that the law reads. I understand that every development, 40B development, has its own unique characteristics. And in particular, what you have here is something that has had some historical proposals and has been vetted by even the Conservation Commission at the level of requests relating to the Wetlands Protection Act. So I don't think, I think it would be inappropriate for the board not to be aware of that and asking questions around that and depending on where that information is leading, and it could, I, I do not know for sure whether or not that will be related to areas outside the proposed area of work for this subdivision. If that's the case, then that's a different story. If it is not the case, and I think that's something that easily could be determined, then maybe that is an area we should be addressing currently, or with a definite placement of the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, I just verify the, the, the comment about not all resource areas were shown or approved is inaccurate. That, that is in order of conditions, but that, because, because we were not concerned, we were not going to be building this section, which is 60 acres, we did not go, and it's pretty thickly wooded and, and rock rires, and we did not go through the trouble of delineating anything beyond this scope here. That's why there was our, all, because the order of, the, 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 there was an issue for the whole site. The commission didn't feel comfortable stating that this is the only wetland that we're showing here. But, but, and I welcome, encourage everybody to talk, communicate with the commission, the subdivision commission, to clarify, to verify what I'm saying. But everything within the scope of this site, the subdivision, is 100% located and approved. The line, the, the wetland lines, and, and whatever is shown here is 100% complete. The, 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 lies that were not shown are, like I said, are off the site, the work limit that are shown on, on this plan.
And those, those 60 acres are not shown on that plan?
Correct.
Can I ask a question? The, the subject property is just this property we're seeing in color.
No, because it's a two property.
Two properties, because this, so this other parcel here is separate from that entity. So why was that involved in the, you know, the...
It's not separate from that, it's the same ownership.
Same ownership.
It's, it's, it's total acreage is included within our application, we're seeing that. You have to be allowed open space. So the only area that's being developed are the two parcels, the easterly parcel and the northwest. So the easterly parcel is 58.7, and the, 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 the roadway, and the other, and the other 28.
So are we going to stay now, or at the end of the project? Are you going to separate these properties? So you have the chapter 40B property and then the isolated open space property?
No, because...
Repeat the question, please.
Well, like, would we submit a separate, separate, separate 40B of rest of the acreage?
No, no. Just, I, 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 no, I'm just, so are they separate lots right now?
There's three separate, there's three separate sets of lots.
Okay. So why are you even mentioning these other properties?
Because it's included in our overall acreage and our overall house.
Yeah, just to, to close the loop on this, it's just a question of depiction. It, it's just, what that plan shows does not depict the 125-acre site, but the project eligibility letter is for the 125 acres. So that's definitely something that could be clarified, and people have expressed concerns about open space. You're going to have certainty as to 125 acres on this site. So that's definitely something that we can articulate in a decision, that we are committing that to open space in perpetuity. So it's not depicted, you know, because of the color plan there, and I can understand the confusion, but that is open space, it is 125-acre site.
If it wants to be depicted, the plan would be twice as big.
Paul Cusson hates using paper, okay? I, I've been through this with him several times. If you want to hear him complain about how much paper, how much paper has been submitted just on this project, he'll tell you all about it. So to double the size of that plan, we decided to save a little bit of paper and just show the area that's relevant for construction.
Maybe we should show the whole thing. Well, it is submitted in, in, in the plan set, there is, the one plan shown. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. Just wondering why you didn't do the ORAD on the front two properties.
On the front two, no, not the ORAD and the front two. So the ORAD is done on, you see in color.
Okay, so then just into this question. If the ORAD is just on those two properties...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. An IRAD is the application, and there's some kind of, yeah, an IRAD is the application, and ORAD was issued, so what precisely is the question?
The ORAD is just on those two properties.
Correct.
The prior one, the, 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 where, 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 where I guess the bigger, the bigger question is, are there... I guess the bigger, the bigger question is are there any wetlands within 100 feet of the work that are not shown on these appointments?
No, no. Whatever, the, the, anything that's going to be impacted by grading and et cetera is delineated. And we can give this board, the peer review engineer and ultimately the Conservation Commission assurance on that issue. So we can resolve that. If there's any lingering confusion, we will close the loop on that.
So, uh, for our next meeting, we need to, uh, get the ball rolling for you guys meeting with other town boards. Obviously you can't meet all of them before next meeting.
Uh, could you just, I'm sorry, articulate what you're asking of us?
Sure, that we need, um, I know we would like you to meet with other town board, including sewer, uh, water.
Would I say this is a workshop?
Okay.
That should be a workshop for the sewer and the water rather than a formal, you know, the.
Yeah, just to, just to, right, I think the antenna go up when there's a statement about meeting with other boards.
Okay.
But when we get into technical input from boards like water and sewer and they have expertise on those boards, that would be appropriate for a work session where our engineers schedule a time to meet with that board. Uh, not at a public here, I mean, I'm sorry, not at a scheduled hearing before that board, but at a meeting that would be noticed and, you know, the public could attend and listen in, but wouldn't provide content, uh, comments. Um, but it would be through this board. So, um, you know, if, if council usually would coordinate the timing of how that takes place and then notice could be given, given at the next hearing potentially um, as to when that would occur to get more feedback and, and do a work session um, on the details that those commissions or those boards are concerned with. Uh, but just to clarify, there wouldn't be any meeting before that board. So just to make the distinction.
I want to suggest is that on other towns, and I think we did it even in this town, is, um, there can be, uh, a member of the zoning board of appeals also attending that workshop.
It doesn't need a member.
Right.
Right, and this board could vote to appoint one member. Uh, and again, that member would not have any decision making authority at that meeting. It's, the member's just there to listen and then to report back to the board so that they were the board's ears um, at that meeting, uh, because the other members didn't have the benefit of the attention. So, uh, and, and obviously this is something and it varies from town to town and ultimately town council needs to be comfortable with how the process works and how the meeting is either, some towns don't, uh, publish notices of those meetings. They're entirely offline. I know that we've talked about having a transparent process in this particular, uh, hearing before this board in this town. So that's something that we can coordinate, uh, with attorney Mitchell and we'll figure out the best way to do it.
Can I get a question?
Sure.
In the beginning, you were talking about that, uh, you're asserting that the board can add other boards within this town except for the Conservation Commission. Does that also apply to the Board of Health with its head health regulations?
So just, and again, to, to make the distinction, the Conservation Commission is the state permit granting authority with respect to the Wetlands Protection Act. So they're not wearing the local hat. So your, your original statement was sort of all encompassing that this board doesn't wear the CONCOM's hat. This board does wear the CONCOM's hat with respect to local wetland bylaws. So this board can hear testimony, make decisions as to whether or not it's going to grant waivers of local wetlands bylaws. But the Conservation Commission still has a bite at the apple with respect to the state bylaw. For the Board of Health, they are not a permit granting authority at the state level for this particular project because there's no, uh, construction works permit for a type of five system.
Because of type of five.
Right, so if they have local regulations that might be relevant, if they're, we're asking for a waiver from some board of health. I mean, towns vary. I haven't memorized the waiver list for this project. Uh, but if there is a local bylaw that would ordinarily be adjudicated by the Board of Health, then this board wears the Board of Health hat in that context.
Yeah, see if they accept, I mean, if it was a well permit or something like that, I think this board may, you know, let, you know, the board make those sort of technical decisions.
Not necessarily. Uh, uh, so if it's a local well permit, um, at a local level, this board would make the decision with the Board of Health's input on the subject matter.
Now, moving like, I feel the roads, we, we obviously know the department is saying with the wetlands and what we have elevations and depths and foundations.
Hold on, hold on. Sorry, I missed the question, Paul.
We have, we have a situation where some of the roads are, some of the houses are, uh, some of it says, so you say six feet. I've seen 66 inches to two feet. I've seen where the roads are going to go. Who's going to do the test pits? Who's responsible to find out the depth where we need to have a good set, set, is that be you?
Well, so there are soil logs in the plans.
Is it required for Board of Health to be involved in that matter?
No, so if we have a certified soil examiner, okay, that does test pits to just determine, uh, depth to groundwater for general engineering purposes, okay, uh, and to determine that the project is feasible. We have done preliminary testing and the soil logs are in the plans, all right? So Mr. Williams, uh, is going to review those soil logs and say, hey, that one says 42 inches. I might want some additional data there, okay? And if he says, yeah, you're a certified soil examiner, go out, do the test pit and report back to me. Or if it's such a critical area and there's a serious concern about depth to groundwater, then you might want him witnessed. And maybe you might bring a Board of Health member along to witness a test pit just because they might have experience determining depth to groundwater. But.
You might have something to do with that if that becomes an issue.
If it becomes an issue, this board says, hey, we want more info about depth to groundwater in this location. But there is preliminary info in, there are soil logs in the plans that show depth to groundwater in areas where we thought was of concern, uh, enough to do preliminary testing there. And obviously in connection with, uh, stormwater management facilities, we need to know upgrades for, uh, the basins and, and those structures as well. Because ultimately, I mean, at this point, we need to know as the developer and this board needs to know as the board that there are no skeletons in the closet, okay? Because we don't want to propose a project that's not going to work. So we need to have sufficient information that our engineers can say from a preliminary perspective, and this goes back to Paul's comments about preliminary plans, but from a preliminary perspective, the project's feasible, it's safe and it can comply with all state regulations, good design principles. If something comes up and it's a red flag, then, then we address it, this board addresses it and, and that is vetted at this level. Uh, but as you know, after the preliminary process, we still have to go before the Conservation Commission and the plans might change later. And then we come back. So it, it can happen.
Just out of curiosity, the soil logs, without me going back and looking, when were they done? What time, what, what, uh, time of year were they, date actually?
Over the previous, um, summer that we proposed the play more for the conservation subject. No, we, we got them out of here. That's why we're here for the application at this time of year because it's nearly to last from the.
They were done in October. They were done in October of 2017, October 11th, 2017.
Um, we had some more reason.
And, and, you know, groundwater and these varies.
Did you do a test with like every 100 feet where the roads and the, and go every 200?
Well, you can see the locations on the plans, but again, that's the details of where those are. I, I think we'll get, if that's one of the questions on your list, and I saw your list there, that's a good one.
But if they couldn't get an answer to that.
Right, so, uh, that being a question on the list, I think that's something GZA will look at with Jacobs and then say, hey, you're a little sparse in this area or, you know, we think we have sufficient information. So we can close the loop on that.
We, uh, before we wrap up tonight, uh, Marguerite, is there anything, um, that you, in particular, that you can think about the top of your head and you want them to have ready for us for the next meeting that you haven't seen yet in the permit or any questions that you have, you want answered?
At this stage, I think that, um, I think we're still gathering data. I think they've, they've been all along identifying things they will be submitting and I've been tracking that as well. So at some point in time, we'll say if you haven't already submitted everyone, we will bring it for the next hearing, next hearing date. But I think that the board members, if, if you get to a point where they've finished presenting so far what they're at, where they're at and the public has had an opportunity to speak, I think it would be helpful for the board members to start asking their specific questions. You may or may not get through everything at the next meeting, but I think that will elicit a lot more information. Um, because I agree, I think you're starting to hear some of those questions right now.
And, uh, just so the public knows, we will be posting where exactly the meeting will be taking place. Judging by the turnout that happened today, um, assuming that the size space won't be necessary, it's probably going to be in the old town hall so that the new enhanced building that we have in that large meeting is there. Um, but we will be in touch at all within, yeah, the time for the.
I did hear though, a request by the highway, um, department commissioner, Mr. Barry, whether or not you would be able to, um, flag the roadways. I do think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll do that as a guideline. Yes, we're, we're, uh, uh, by Somerset.
Do you want connectors to come from Mr. Barry? Are you suggesting that be just the entrance or a little bit more like?
The two corners with the player would be.
It's two locations in the roadway, Somerset Out, right?
Right, with the road, with the roadway plans on each corner of each roadway.
Yes.
Just a quick note to, um, building the houses, I just wanted to let them know that the, the stretch code is now in effect for the town of Dayton. So when you start building the houses, um, the stretch code, we have to follow that.
I have actually one last question for now. It's coming into my head and I don't want to forget it. Um, I believe there are electric poles or electric lines that go through part of that. Am I right?
Yes.
Do you know, or can you tell me since I don't, we can't see here, how, where they are in relationship to homes they're being built? And if any of those wires are going to pass on or how close to property that will be constructed?
So I think we'll submit a letter that describes that and then we can, uh, give you that information so that you have it. And it's articulated so that you can understand exactly where they are.
But there are no houses on the lines.
Right, there are no houses on the lines. We'll, we'll, um, clarify that.
Can you say in general that the drainage lines bisect property? I don't know exactly how many houses are reached out of it, but.
How many will we see in stormwater?
A drainage report? So we have a, a drainage report that's in the application, um, and then.
Preliminary calculation.
Preliminary calculations for preliminary sizing of the basins.
I could add more.
But I think what, so that's one of the things, what usually happens is we submit the preliminary report, which is available. That goes to the peer review engineer. If the peer review engineer says, I need more data on this, I need more data on that, then that will evolve. But it is in the package.
Some, it's in process to be taken care of.
Yep.
Mitigations about that, we have that.
Um, so there's a calculations to proposed alteration, but when you say mitigation.
Yeah, the mitigation, well, that's probably what I meant, alterations, the way that this is here.
Um, I don't, I'm not sure which plan this, but there is, uh, I could point you.
Would you guys, would you have five minutes left? That's a whole meeting. So this is a question that's going to go on.
Uh, we can point you the right direction as to where the information on alteration is, but there is some alteration.
Thank you so much. Uh, and also again, thank you to, uh, the committee up here for, uh, giving us this opportunity. I think it's fair to say that, uh, I would advise that the next meeting, uh, with full disclosure and more lead time be conducted here in this building. I don't think this sparse turnout is a reflection of lack of interest on the part of the constituents uh, that would be impacted by this. It's just because of the, the old timing. So, uh, and I think frankly, uh, had, had this been a more robust turnout, I think there'd be certainly more kickback tonight. I think enough red flags, issues, questions, even among, uh, our principals here representing this particular project, inconsistencies, questions, uncertainties, uh, you know, kind of percolate to the top and, and raise, raise the specter that we need to do more due diligence. We need more peer review studies. Counselor representing Mr. Moniz, one of the abutters on Country Hill Drive, as I am, indicated that perhaps this was the time for a more robust study on the wetland impact. So, um, whether it be the peer review on the engineering, whether it be traffic, whether it be potential impacts on water, whether it be, uh, uh, sewage runoff, wow, the magnitude of this project. And when you think about it, 94 units or 92, whatever the inconsistency may be, doesn't matter. And this number, 94, is quite an enormous project. Please, let's draw due diligence. Let's do full disclosure. Let's get everybody involved. In that way, whatever decision is forthcoming, it has more of a collective consensus and support. And in that spirit, if there's some way, and I don't know if this town allows for it, that some summary of the minutes of this meeting could be disseminated, either posted at the town hall or a mailing to our residents. Because I'm driving out tonight, I spoke to one of my, uh, colleagues on Country Hill. He said, Bill, that, that's not my problem. I'm on the other side of the street. Well, that individual get a phone call once I get out here tonight saying, no, the problem is more pervasive than just those abutting.
All of me, yeah, all of our minutes are, are posted and, and they're public.
And there's no opportunity for some disclosure through a mailing of our residents, given the magnitude of this project and the idea of it somewhere and many unaware and not available. And counselor mentioned a September meeting, uh, I would just advocate more lead time, more transparency, more disclosure. Thank you.
I will tell you that I, I think the, the two other projects that this developer that I know of were involved in this town, the Stoney Ridge and, um, the Pines, were projects that were originally talked about, thought about, you know, years ago. I think one started in 2009, correct, for sure. And the other one was 2012 or something. One project just recently finished, the other project isn't finished yet. And the reason I'm pointing that out is there's a lot to go through. There's a long process, as we said earlier. Um, this isn't going to happen tomorrow. This developer's worked with this town before. Um, so I think the developer probably has a pretty good understanding to some respects of what the town looks for and expects, even though we're a different committee up here and so forth. So it's going to be processes. It's going to involve a lot of input from a lot of people.
Oh, for sure.
Yes, we do absolutely encourage you. Call your friend across the street and tell him he does have a statement. I mean, that's part of this is all that.
Absolutely. And the success of this development or early of projects does not necessarily.
It's not the same. It's not the same.
Exactly.
There's no, you know, denying that.
Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting that automatically, you know, if but for kind of thing. I'm just saying that this developer has a history of at least understanding, you know, the expectations to some extent of what this town expects and looks for.
But clearly proper vetting for this particular project, given the red flags we have heard tonight about sewage, wetlands, traffic, water table, water resources availability, limited supply of water. I'm not an engineer. I'm a business person. I'm an academician. But I can tell you, there's enough red flags, enough questions have been raised. We need to drag our feet in a due diligence posture. I don't mean drag our feet to cause these folks frustration. Drag our feet, due diligently, be sure we are informed. Thank you.
The town, the town is hiring top notch engineers and attorneys and review, I mean, it's going to be very thorough.
So before I make the motion to adjourn, um, we are going to keep, so August 14th is going to be the next public hearing that will be here at 7:00 PM. Again, it's August 14th.
So it's going to be in this room?
Yes. And then July 31st, the public site visit in that exact address, the Winter 7. Uh, 766 Somerset Out, July 31st, public site visit, uh, that's, uh, 766 Somerset Out.
And times, what time did that?
That was a six.
And is there weather, it's going to bring the late day?
There is. The longer we can, we will look into that, we'll post that.
We need to set that, Mr. Chairman, at a meeting. So is that something you want to talk about right now? Or we can just, if it can be canceled and you can at the next public hearing set a different shape.
Uh, Marguerite, uh, what would you advise for that?
I think at this stage, why don't we, it may make sense because we're. I think at this stage, why don't we, it may make sense because we are, it is hard. It's hard to schedule with, with summer vacations, I would say this. 5/31st, if there is a rain issue, you will cancel it. That cancellation will be posted where all public notices are. So you may want to check, however the town, Nicole, I don't know if you post, you post at the town hall. I know you also post anything on the site, on the website.
So it's on our website at the zoning boards page in agendas and minutes. You're also there, and it's also posted in the front lobby of the town hall and right by the clerk's office.
So if it is canceled, then we will just, I would, I would suggest your motion be to adjourn to the site visit and then, and to the next public hearing, to put both dates into your motion. But that way, if it's canceled, you already have another date set. And then at that point in time, we can work with the board members and determine two, two different dates for a site visit, and you can have a regular.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn for this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
To, to, you got, I think, to July 31st?
Oh, to, so yeah, to July 31st, public site visit, 766 Somerset Ave at 6:00 PM.
And?
Oh, and then as, as a rain date, we will announce at that meeting the next two available options for that.
Right, and, and also that we adjourn to August 14th.
And then to adjourn to August 14th, meeting here, middle school, 7:00 PM.
I apologize, it's my first time here for the extending the public hearing for our 40 minutes.
Is that, that's your motion, Jason?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Is there a second?
The second.
Do you second me, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.